Okay, uh, call the meetings to order. Um, gubernatorial disaster proclamation, executive order 2020 oh seven. Executive order in response to COVID-19, uh, COVID-19 executive order number five, as amended by executive order 2020 dash thirty-three, executive order in response to COVID-19, COVID-19 executive order number thirty-one, and as reissued and extended by executive order 2020 thirty-nine, executive order in response to COVID-19, uh, COVID-19 executive order number thirty-seven. Open meeting desk five I L C S one twenty dash slash two and one twenty slash seven, suspension of public body physically present and limiting remote participation. I, Dave Brandt, as president pro temp of the Board of Trustees, McHenry County Conservation District, has determined this is not practical or approved to hold a public meeting at the Board of Trustees for July twenty-first in person due to the current pandemic. Okay, so call the order please, Ann.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Honey.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
And Trustee Brandt.
Yes. Fledge of allegiance, please. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty. So, have you done the roll call? You just did, right?
Yeah.
No need for remote participation? Um, Linda, would you please read conservation ethics, uh, number six, please?
Sure, call number six. To foster a conservation ethic amongst the McHenry County citizens, help all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role and and responsible for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recommends the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space.
Thank you very much. And John, would you do goal number two, please?
Sure. To acquire and maintain other wild lands, big areas, open spaces for conservation purposes for educational and recreational use.
Thank you. And Pat, would you please read the conservation stewardship pledge number five?
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, the beautiful outd- and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Uh, do I do number six?
Yes, please.
Uh, we will spark hope for a future more closely intertwined with the nature, natural world.
Thank you very much, Pat. Uh, so now we have reading and order of office. Uh, should I just read that?
Well, you all, very generally, you have.
Okay, all, I, of all.
It's all in your folder?
Uh, do, uh, yeah, in your folder. I, um, Dave Brandt.
Charlie Campbell.
Pat Britt.
Bill Cook.
Linda Thomas.
John Hemming.
And I think I said Dave Brandt. Uh, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Trustee as a member of the Board of Trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Illinois compiled statutes, any applicable rules and policies of the McHenry, of the county of McHenry, and the policies and bylaws governing the McHenry County Conservation District to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Do you want me to square this?
I square.
I square. Are you solemnly affirm if you want?
Alright, so now what we go is to nomination for President, Gift Band Act Officer and Ethics Officer, and I repeat it twice, or three times. Three times. So is there a nomination for President, Gift Band Act Officer and Ethics Officer?
I would like to nominate trustee John Hemming for President.
Uh, is there a nomination for President, Gift Band Act Officer and Ethics Officer? Well, I have to say, if I may, take this time, I was gonna nominate myself, but I really, really, really want a better cohesive board than we had last year, and I do want everyone to know that I'm not rolling over and playing dead. With that said, I'll read the third nomination for President, Gift Band Act Officer and Ethics Officer, is there a nomination? Hearing none, Ann, would you please, we have, uh, John Hemming?
We need a second.
Oh.
I second.
Okay.
No. Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Honey.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell, yes. Motion to cast a unanimous vote.
Mr. President, I hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dave.
You go to the team.
Oh, my God! All of this, yeah. Probably COVID-19. That's why we're, uh, we're.
There's the lights off.
Alright, well, thank you, everyone. Um, I, I echo what Dave said, I really do, hopefully, it was a very good year working together and everything. We have a wonderful opportunity here, we have a great district, we have a lot of great employees, um, we have a lot going for us, and, uh, I can do what we do. That's all I really have to say, I hope we work as a good cohesive unit, and everything can come out in the meeting, and we have good discussions, and all of them are friends.
And I promise that if we disagree, I'll a little bit civil about it.
Very good. That's how we should go all day.
Okay. That going on, I will now open, uh, floor for nominations for Vice President. Oh, that's better. You have a better touch than I have. Alright, nomination for Vice President. I'd like to nominate Dave Brandt. Is there a second?
Second.
Linda has a second. Further nomination for Vice President. Any other nomination for Vice President? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll call, though.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell, yes. Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
And Trustee Honey.
Yes.
Motion to cast a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dave.
You're back.
Okay, I am opening the floor for nominations for Treasurer. I'd like to nominate, um, Bill Cook. Nomination to Bill Cook, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Linda. Further nominations for Treasurer. Nominations for Treasurer.
Can I just, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
If it's okay. Um, I think this is a great idea, I think it's a good, uh, choice. Um, I did wanna say that I kinda would, had looked forward to an opportunity of perhaps doing this myself one of these times, um, I don't think I was part of the conversation that's in place, and I kinda just wanted to say that because I feel like I had, I wanted to put myself out there, but not today, but because, um, I would have liked to have been part of that conversation. I think that Bill would be very good in that role, and he's done, uh, made a lot of contributions over the last year, so I very much would support him. I'm happy for him.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll call for a bullet.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. Trustee Campbell, yes. Trustee Honey.
Yes.
Motion to cast a unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, Phil. And now I would like to roll for the nomination for Secretary.
Would you be willing?
Sure.
Okay, I nominate, uh.
Linda.
Linda. I think it's one square, it's here.
Hi, I'm Dave, how are you?
How are you, Dave? Nomination for Linda Campbell, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Bill. Any other nominations for Secretary? Any other nominations for Secretary? Who is it?
Well, I don't know.
Wow! But anyway, I'll call for a bullet, Ann.
Trustee Campbell, yes. Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Britt.
Yes.
Trustee Brandt.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas, yes. And Trustee Honey, yes. Motion to cast a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Very good. Alright, trustee outreach. He's up on the very first call. Um, okay, for Financial Administration Committee, is it alright if we all sort of run that? Is that everybody on board with that?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep.
Are we good with that?
Yes.
Everybody's good with that.
Alright, very good, so we can roll over to the committee of the hall. Um, we have another committee, does this family still agree?
Yes, on the last page, fifteen point zero.
Well, yeah, those back, uh.
Is that what you mean? Is that what that supposed to mean?
Does that mean no, no requirements there? Yeah, generally, we do have some standing committees, we haven't been using them for policy, and then if they're our assignment, it lives on, and then you don't have to determine that tonight if you wanna do that for August, it's just to see if everybody's gonna move around if they want to.
So we, we should be alright for that? You're not in dire need of both things, alright? So, my group, they get the thing, I hear wish lists tonight?
No. We consider us being dead, I'll be good.
Alright, great. Alright, we're gonna move on from there, then. Um, we have a presentation, uh, is that the, how?
So the first, uh, for presentation, we have introduction of new team members, and so normally they've been here in person, and so hopefully they'll be able to introduce themselves on Zoom, and their picture will come forward. So I'm gonna start off and turning it over to Wendy Corr from our Marketing Education Services, uh, to introduce our education team.
Hey, Wendy.
Wow, um, are they here?
I don't know.
I don't know if they're here. So, um, Becky Lambert is our education manager, she comes to us from Rockford. Um, Becky, are you online here?
I am online.
Say hello to everyone.
Hello, everyone.
She started just, um, two days before we went into lockdown, basically. Not lockdown, but in, into COVID, so she's been with us through this whole COVID experience. Um, so she is heading up the team. Um, would you like to say a few things about yourself?
Uh, I'm really excited to be here, even with the COVID, uh, fun. It's been an interesting start, um, but I'm excited to, uh, get back to my roots of environmental ed and outdoor ed, and decided to be part of a agency that really puts the conservation education in their, um, in their main goal, so, uh, I can't wait till we, we level up and we get going.
I think that goes for all of us. Um, and then Valerie Caduto, we hired as our program coordinator, and she is stationed out of Prairie View Education Center. And I don't see that she's here, and then our third person that we hired was Amy Collins. She was hired on as our education outreach coordinator, and all three of them kinda started in the February, March timeframe, so they've been with us just a short time, um, and kinda been going through the flows and adjustments with us. But the.
Welcome, everybody.
Welcome.
Yep.
And then, uh, we have site management manager Perry Weaver, if you could introduce your team.
Yes, um, Josh Critton, Josh, uh, I see you're on the Zoom, um, is your mic on?
It is now.
Alright. Um, so, yes, I'd like to, uh, welcome Josh Critton in as the new Region Five Ranger. Um, he started about fifteen years ago with the Conservation District, uh, working for me, um, as a seasonal, um, back in Region Two, uh, quite a few years ago, and then in twenty thirteen, he became, uh, he was hired on as the Region Two Assistant Ranger, and then sixteen, he left the Conservation District, moved over to Lake County, uh, for about a year and a half, um, still with, uh, park maintenance. And then in, uh, I think it was about twenty eighteen, uh, we hired him back from Lake County as the Region One Assistant Ranger, and, uh, now he's been promoted onto as the Region Five Ranger, and, uh, we're just thrilled to have him back with the district and to, uh, offer him and him to accept the Region Five Ranger position, so, thank you, Josh, and, uh, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just say, uh, thank you, Perry, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, the, uh, new challenges and, uh, uh, see what the, uh, position brings. That's about it, though.
Welcome, Josh.
Yes, Josh, it's, uh, well deserved, so, welcome. And then also, yep, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, and then, uh, we have Travis Sandos. Uh, Travis, um, is your mic on?
I see his name, but I don't see whether.
Yeah. Yeah, I see his name too, but, uh, it, Travis, are you there? Okay, well, whoop. I'd like to welcome Travis Sandos, uh, he's the Region Five Assistant Ranger. Um, he actually worked as a seasonal too, uh, with the Conservation District for a couple years there, Travis, how you doing, Travis?
He, he doesn't have a device with a microphone.
Yeah, struggling with the audio, but, um, Travis is with us, um, we saw an audio, video, excuse me, so he, um, he worked for the Conservation District for a couple seasons, um, under Kurt Klinger, um, in Region Five, uh, which is part of the Prairie Trail South and a couple other sites, the Ridgefield Trace, too. And then, uh, in seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty, he moved on and worked as a seasonal for Marion Hill State Park, uh, so he brings to the Conservation District into sites of plenty of experience and knowledge, uh, with site maintenance and specifically with, uh, the regional multi-use trail maintenance, uh, that, uh, of course, we have and we need, um, on the Prairie Trail South. Um, so, welcome Travis Sandos, and, um, glad to have you onboard.
Thank you. Welcome, thank you.
So, how is everything in Region Five? Very hard things in Region Five. I see we, we got two people there, so they, they find a lot to do?
Uh, yeah, it's much better now that we have two people in Region Five. Um, we've been scrambling a bit, uh, with Mary Hill, or excuse me, Mary DJ's departure. Um, Jacob Holmes, of course, was on paternity leave for extended period of time, so we've been, uh, shuffling around, uh, to have Travis and to, uh, have Josh onboard, working full-time now as Ranger and Assistant Ranger, Region Five. Uh, we're looking to get caught up, uh, as all of you are well aware, the Prairie Trail South is our most popular site, most highly utilized site, and, um, I'm very confident that Josh and Travis will be able to, uh, get caught up in that region and, uh, you know, get, uh, everything back up and running to our standards.
Very good. Are they all doing well? Oh, wow, we'll move on.
Just like you know, there's a light delay, ask me when you say something, when they can hear it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to seven two, Gallagher's presentation, health insurance program.
And I'm gonna turn this over to our Director of Finance Administration, Andy Diallo, and our Human Resource Manager, Jenny Hyder, to introduce our representatives that are here this evening from the I P B C.
Um, so, so tonight we have, uh, Dave Cook, who, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we have David Cook, who's the Executive Director for I P B C, which is the Illinois Personnel Benefit Co-op, um, and then we have Tyler Feeney, who's with Gallagher and Associates, um, and they work as a consultant and, uh, marketing, administrating, um, and serving the I P B C members, as, as well as Gallagher, you know, obviously is our insurance broker and works with lots of other independent agencies as well. Um, just as a reminder, we, we've been looking at I P Z, I P B C for about years, um, and and really the drive that they'll tell you about is where, you know, that rate stabilization, um, they have a history of showing, you know, very low average rates, so I don't wanna steal any of their thunder, um, I'll turn it over to them, I'm not sure who's gonna start. Um, Jenny, did you wanna add anything before they jump in?
No, I believe you covered everything.
Okay.
Hello, this is, this is Dave Cook, let me just quickly introduce myself, uh, tell you a little bit about I P B C, and then Tyler will sort of take us through the presentation. I P B C is, um, if you could probably go to the next slide, I'd appreciate it. Um, I P B C has been around since nineteen seventy-nine. We currently have a hundred and thirty-nine members, governmental entities throughout the state of Illinois, uh, in, included in that membership is the, is the County of McHenry. We also have several forest preserve districts, some within your conservation district, um, but what we, you know, we are a membership organization that provides health and medical benefits to our members. Uh, we have had significant growth over the last, uh, five to six years. Uh, I became the first Executive Director of the I P B C in nineteen, excuse me, nineteen, um, in twenty thirteen, when we had sixty-six members, so we've almost over-doubled ourselves in, in the last, uh, seven years. My background is I have over thirty-six years' experience in local government. Um, my, uh, I retired in twenty thirteen as the Village Manager in Hinsdale. Hinsdale have been a long-term member of the I P B C, so in essence, I have over thirty years of experience with the I P B C and understand how it can really help, uh, yeah, government entities, and like Andy said, the, the true value of the I P B C is long-term. Uh, when we start to see some of the slides, you'll understand that we have consistently been able to beat the market trend in going forward, and it's, and I tell people, it's, it's pretty easy, because we currently have over seven, uh, approximately seventeen thousand two hundred employees that, that we cover throughout the state of Illinois, and it has a lot to do with those numbers, with those numbers, we, we have buying power. And as I mentioned, we are a membership organization, uh, we are governed by the members, it, it's unique, that becoming part of the I P B C, you move from being a customer of Blue Cross Blue Shield to be an owner partner of the, uh, of the I P B C. We encourage our members to become involved in I P B C, uh, we have, uh, a Board of Directors, an Executive Board, uh, three standing committees, our Finance Committee, our Operations Committee, and our Membership Development Committee. We believe strongly that, uh, working together with, with all our, uh, members, that we can, uh, produce, you know, uh, healthy results for our members at a price that is, is hard to beat. You wanna turn to the.
Before we jump to the next slide, this is Tyler Feeney on the line, I just wanna make sure, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize if you were, if you were talking to me before, having some challenges with the audio, but I think I'm all good to go now. Thanks for, for kicking us off, Dave. Um, this, this next slide really just kinda goes into a high level of what the, the true value is of moving to, uh, an organization like the I P B C, um, and the big element that we see with that is the purchasing power. So right now with the Conservation District, uh, when you're going out to bid, when you're going to market for plans for your renewal, um, to get that competitive pricing, when carriers are looking at you, they're looking at the seventy or so enrolled lives that you have on your plan today, whereas under the I P B C umbrella, we're talking close to seventeen thousand enrolled employees, so that comes with a lot more weight and carries a lot more weight when you're trying to leverage those types of things and negotiate pricing. Access to data, right now on a, on a fully insured basis with Blue Cross, you're getting a little bit of data, um, but there's not a whole lot of information that they're going to allow you to be privy to, uh, based on the fact that you're considered more small to mid-market. Uh, however, within the I P B C, each of our preferred carriers, uh, look at, um, the I P B C as one total client, and because of that, they can, they'll consider the McHenry County Conservation District a large client and therefore release, um, data in kind, so you'll get a lot more reporting on a monthly basis, um, to help you make, drive, uh, you know, those more educated decisions. Stability and predictability, Dave and I will go into, um, what some of the five-year renewals have been for both our HMO and PPO here in a moment, um, but really just having such a massive group, uh, helps you build more stable and predictable renewals, so you can plan better for your future, uh, so you can budget more accordingly, as opposed to kinda seeing these peaks and valleys over the years from an insurance perspective. Full disclosure and transparency, uh, you know, we disclose where all the dollars flow within the I P B C, you get to see, you know, how exactly the carriers are compensated, um, you know, where all the dollars are flowing, there's nothing hidden behind, uh, you know, a curtain, and we make sure that that's all available to you. Um, we issue, uh, compensation disclosures on an annual basis, uh, to the Conservation District, similar to what Gallagher, uh, your broker is doing now. Um, and then lastly is, you know, that municipal service team, which again, you're, you're experiencing now with your relationship with Gallagher, but also working with the I P B C, you get access to, um, a team, uh, of Gallagher consultants that work on nothing but I P B C business and really understand the unique intricacies that you face as a, as a public sector entity.
Add one thing here, one thing too, is that I P B C has its own website, and on that website, we have over now six years of data, not only, and as a member, you can act, we, we think we're all in this together because we all impact each other, not only can you see your data, but you can see the data and information from every member, you can see their plan designs, you can query online, uh, if you have questions to other members, it, it's, it's a great tool that helps in, in both the transferring, but transparency, but also planning for the future.
Thanks, Dave. And if you wouldn't mind advancing the slide, please?
What was that? Oh, that's fine. Who's in that? Who's in charge of that?
I am. Working on it. I have a delay.
Howard.
So what this next slide dives into is it speaks to some of that predictability and stability that we talked about on that, that previous slide, so what we're looking at is the five-year average, um, for the PPO renewal history, um, within the I P B C. So over the last five years, you'll see there at the bottom that we're averaging at about a three point six percent, uh, on a renewal basis, which is significantly better than what we're seeing as trend in the marketplace. What you're noticing on the graph is, so we have our green line, um, which is really what we're seeing in the, more of the public sector, uh, space, on average, how, uh, plans are performing, and then the blue line is more of how I P B C is performing, so you can see how year over year, we're continuing to beat trend in the marketplace, and again, that five-year average is about a three point six, um, which is about half of what we typically see in the marketplace. You'll also notice, uh, the word surplus at the bottom of, of the screen at the, to the tune of two point three percent. Um, one of the nice functions of being in the I P B C, or what's considered a self-insured product, is you have the ability to earn surplus dollars back on your premium when you have favorable claims years. Currently, right now with Blue Cross, or really any fully insured, uh, type product or carrier, um, when you have those favorable claims years, uh, Blue Cross, or United Healthcare, whoever, is really just pocketing that additional revenue. Um, you know, they're gonna say, hey, thanks, you know, we appreciate you not having a lot of claims this year, uh, McHenry County Conservation District, but, uh, you know, they're not gonna give those dollars back to you, whereas, uh, you know, you really become more of a, a part owner in the I P B C, and you have the ability to earn some of those surplus dollars back, which, again, to the tune of two point three percent can really add up year over year. If you could, uh, switch to the next slide, please? Um, so I know this is a little bit tough to see, uh, on the screen, but basically, uh, you know, again, going back to that transparency, what we're seeing here, um, is the renewals over the last couple of years for all of our individual members, as well as each of our subpoles. Um, if you squint your eyes a little bit and look at the very bottom right-hand corner, you'll see highlighted the three point six two percent, um, and that's where we're driving that five-year renewal average number for you. So, again, just kinda showing you a little bit behind the curtain on where we're getting some of these calculations. If we could jump to the next slide, please? So, again, almost the exact same thing that we were looking at, uh, from the PPO, but now we're talking HMO, so again, the green line is what we're seeing, uh, trend in the industry, blue line is how the I P B C has been performing. Um, you'll notice that our five-year average is actually lower than the HMO, um, we've seen a lot of value, uh, financially, um, for many of our I P B C members, so the renewal five-year average is about two point five percent, uh, and the surplus is substantially higher, about six point two percent, so there's, there's a lot of value to be had there with the HMO, um, and we, we think we can do a lot of the same with the Conservation District. If you wouldn't mind, uh, rotating the slide, please? Again, same thing we're, we're talking about as we saw with the, the PPO slides before, you squint your eyes again, look at the bottom, uh, right-hand corner, you'll see that two point five percent. Mind, uh, rotating the slide forward? Um, so in one of those original slides, uh, we had talked about your access to data, uh, so what this slide does is just illustrate some of the information that you'll get, uh, as a member of the I P B C, um, as, as Dave talked about a little bit, you're gonna get access to data, both individually, that targets how the, uh, McHenry County Conservation District is performing, you'll also get to see how your subpool, um, uh, and whip, which we'll, we'll talk about here in a minute, which is made up of your, uh, most regionally close neighbors, you could see how you're performing, your subpool's. You could see how you're performing, your subpool is performing, and how the overarching IPBC is performing. As Dave mentioned, you'll have access to all kinds of data on our IPBC website. You'll also have access to a portal specific to the conservation district that will allow you to view monthly reports, which will be populated by your Gallagher service team. And you'll also have, you know, that expert consultation to not only have all of this data at your fingertips, but you know, have experts in the space like myself and Dave and others to help you digest that information. And again, just drive that educated decision-making, you know, at the, at the conservation district level. Go ahead and rotate this line, please. This slide here is just talking about who our, our various preferred partners are within the IPBC. You'll probably notice some familiar faces on there. Won't go into too much detail, but Blue Cross is one of our preferred partners within the IPBC. And one of the, as, as Andy mentioned before, so Gallagher and the IPBC really started interacting back at the end of twenty eighteen. Some of you may remember my face, I was out at your, your beautiful location. And the conservation district had hired Gallagher external to the IPBC on a standalone basis effective one-one of twenty nineteen. And the part of the rationale behind that was Blue Cross has, is one of the carriers within the IPBC, but has some unique rule sets where they limit the ability for what they call smaller or more mid-market groups to join the cooperative. These are not IPBC rules, these are not Gallagher rules, these are strictly coming from carriers. And basically, any group that is under a hundred life, a hundred enrolled lives, which would fit the criteria of the conservation district runs into a few hurdles. But one of the ways to get around that is to hire the incumbent broker that manages the cooperative, which in this case is Gallagher, for eighteen months in advance of the transition. So going all the way back to one-one of twenty nineteen, we were really setting the stage to port your, for you over into the pool. And now because of this, we'll be able to take your current Blue Cross plans that you have today on a fully insured basis with Blue Cross, and we'll be able to port those plan designs as they are into the IPBC directly. So it's really going to minimize disruption, it's going to minimize employee disruption. Frankly, a lot of your employees probably really won't notice a difference. They'll get a new employee, or I'm sorry, a new medical and prescription drug card in the mail. But other than that, you know, you, they really shouldn't notice a huge substantial difference. The plan design should really be the same. You'll notice some other carrier partners we have in there. We have access to optional dental and vision programs via MetLife and VSP. You know, that we have our standard life program, which we typically see about thirty percent savings for our clients that transition of the standard life program within the IPBC. And that's really just sheer again to the, to the volume of members that we have and the population that's being covered. And the other two things I want to mention quickly on this slide is by being a member of the IPBC, you are also given access to Business Solver at no additional charge. And that is our benefit administrative, benefit administration platform, which can assist with things like electronic enrollment, COBRA administration, ACHA reporting. So it's really going to help, you know, folks like Jenny and others to, to, you know, lift some of that work off their shoulders and outsource that. And really help, you know, organize things and, and make things easier on, on your end from an administration perspective. So that's another tool that you'll get as access as a part of the IPBC. And then lastly, I wanted to briefly touch on Express Scripts, which is the carved-out prescription drug manager for the IPBC. And Dave, do you want to talk about a little bit some of the work we've been doing with the Express Scripts?
Yes, and this sort of goes to the purchasing power of the IPBC. Two years ago, we took our pharmacy out, out to bid. We, we, at the time felt we had a very competitive contract with the Express Scripts. We sent it out, we've sent it out to the six largest PBMs in the country. After six months of analysis of contracting, we renewed with ESI, but at a nineteen percent discount of what we were previously paying. In part to two things, one, competition, but the other side was that our growth in numbers had put us into a higher tier where we got better discounts. That nineteen percent amounted to forty-six million dollars over three years. And those savings got passed right along to the members. It resulted in an overall decrease in free rates to every member by over three percent.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, and again, that's just another example of, you know, that purchasing power that we, we've spoken to a number of times. And really the value that can come along from, you know, rolling with the pack as opposed to, to being out there on your own. And I think we're ready to rotate the, move the slide forward, please. So building off things like the benefit administration platform that we see here at the top of the list, there's a number of other programs that are included within your IPBC premiums. So none of the things that we're talking about come at, at an additional charge. So again, we see the, the Business Solver Benefit Administration Platform. There's also a wellness program that's currently built into the IPBC. The IPBC truly believes that wellness is important to really making sure that employees who are engaged in their own personal healthcare tend to have reduced claims, they tend to be healthier, it tends to reduce absenteeism, you know, make sure that, you know, your folks are showing up to work, that they're happy, that they're healthy. And that also financially, it, it really, the numbers and the data that we've seen show that it, it's worth it on a wellness program such that the IPBC has today. Some of the additional value adds that again, come at, at no additional cost to you is the IPBC offers up to a hundred dollars per employee each year to each participating member to participate in the IPBC. So I'm just using round numbers here. But let's say, you know, the conservation district has fifty employees who decide to participate in the program. You have the ability to earn, you know, about five grand in, in funding towards an, in towards a wellness program that you decide to put on. You would work very closely with your Gallagher team, we would help you put that together. We have preferred vendors that we could help set you up and get discounted pricing on. But it's a great opportunity to get some funding for a wellness program and as well as build on what maybe you already have in place today. Additionally, you have the opportunity to earn incentive dollars for participating in, in said wellness program, which at various tiers, each employee can earn for the conservation district up to four hundred dollars per head. So that can really add up real quickly. And those dollars go directly back to the conservation district. You can really use them in whatever fashion you want. If you want to, you know, simply add them to your rainy day fund, fantastic. We've had groups that have, you know, used them for other things, you know, like building a small gym on their, on premises for employees. But there's all kinds of options you can use to utilize those additional funds. You'll notice on there, the, the third one down on the list, virtual visits with Blue Cross. So it's really just, you know, being able to FaceTime your doctor, which is really convenient, especially these days with, with all of the, the COVID atmosphere going on. It's also great for, you know, those, those times when you really just need to get into a doctor and, you know, maybe it's, you know, the middle of Sunday evening and you, there's no way you can get into a physician right now. You don't necessarily want to go to the emergency room or, you know, maybe you have a, a child who's sick, but you're scrambling to get to work, you're trying to get them to school. You know, it might be a lot easier to jump on a fifteen-minute FaceTime call as opposed to running into the, the nearest surgeon here. Lastly, the one other program I want to talk about is the Employee Assistance Program. So this is basically a hotline that your employees can call for counseling, for resources. And there's, there's really all kinds of different value adds that we see with this program. Employees can call if they're, you know, suffering from, you know, various grief, if they've had a death, if they're having marital problems, you know, financial problems, stress or anxiety on the job or otherwise. All types of resources that employees can access here. And all of that is, you know, held confidential and done with a third party. So, you know, Gallagher is not aware of who's, who's calling and what they're talking about, and neither is the district. So employees can be confident that their, you know, personal affairs are being kept personal, but they can still get the resources that they need. If you could please, uh, transition to the next slide. Again, just building off the, some other additional value-add programs. You know, we have a travel assistance program for, for folks when they are abroad or a hundred miles from home that can be beneficial as well as Dave mentioned, that IPBC website. If we could transition to the next slide, please. So the, real quick, what, what we want to touch on here is, you know, as of course today, you know, your broker, you know, myself and, and my team, Gallagher are currently your broker, and we're managing your policies on, on a fully insured basis, for example, with Blue Cross. That being said, you know, in the event that you do pull the trigger and move forward with the IPBC, Gallagher would still be your exclusive broker on that front. But any, you know, policy, coverage, risk, challenge that you're facing that falls outside of what the IPBC covers, which again is, you know, the medical and the life, but then we also have those dental, those optional dental and vision programs. But, you know, Gallagher can continue to manage any other policy, you know, risk or, or challenge that you're seeing outside of the IPBC as well. If you could transition to the next slide, please. Now we got one more slide forward, please. So what we're looking at here is a list of all the members in the IPBC. We'll, we'll show in a sec the next slide, which will show even more members. But you'll see at the top, there's currently a hundred and thirty-nine members in the IPBC as of seven-one of twenty twenty. You know, Dave talks a little bit about our history earlier stemming from, you know, nineteen seventy-nine. And I believe, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say there were about eight or so original members, and we've just really grown substantially in the last couple decades. And that's just simply because groups are recognizing the financial benefits that again, just come from, you know, rolling with the pack as opposed to, to being out there on your own. On the screen, you're seeing some of our larger members, and if you wouldn't mind transitioning to the next slide.
Wait, switch the slide. Say, take a look at some of the, especially on the first slide of the dates. You will see that members, when they join the IPBC rarely leave. It's because of the, the things we've been talking about, the stability, predictability, the budgetability, and the organization as a membership organization. When the members join, like I said, it's, it's infrequent that one ever leaves. And we have, some of the tenures are, you know, exceedingly long.
Yes, I thank you, Dave. This, this next slide again, showing some more members within the IPBC. These tend to be some of our, you know, a little bit smaller. And what we're seeing here is the various regional subpools broken out across the state. Again, they're, they're all regionally based. You'll see in, next to each of the acronyms, they break out what they are called. That middle column, which, which a little bit of a reddish tint, you'll see NWHIP, the Northwest Illinois Health Insurance Pool, is where the McHenry County Conservation District would fall in the event that you decide to move forward with the IPBC. So you're going to probably see some of your more regional neighbors within that list, although, you know, it is a larger subpool and it covers a lot of groups, you know, about west, north and west of, of the Chicagoland area. But generally, most of your most close proximity neighbors are going to be there, as well as a few additional in that larger group on the first page. And I believe that's it, yep, all right. And then you got my lovely face there, so my contact information is on there. And of course, you know, you're more than welcome to reach out to myself, to Dave with any questions you have, especially if they pop up, you know, after this call. But, you know, while you have me and Dave here, we'd be more than happy to, you know, field any questions, concerns, or anything that we can clarify in more detail for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Hello? That was very thorough and informationful. I think that's all we need for tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate you having us on.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's done. We'll move on to trustees' report. Anybody able to get out and about?
I did not get out and about, but I wanted to bring up this thing I saw on the Woodstock Independent. And it was conservation groups to host Latino families, the, the Thunders, Land Conservancy, Hackmatac, and us. And I just think it's a great thing to do. So I want to shout out to everyone that's involved in that. And lastly, I, as President Pro Tem, I called Victoria McGrath of McGrath, wondering what the status was of the cultural assessment. And I will say that the conversation was parted and debative. So I called Andrew and asked if he would please be the middle person. And if it turns out that the things that there was planning on being done was okay, I would be happy with it. So Andy got back to me and thank you, Andrew, for your work. Just in summary, the, the, it's almost done with report, near file. Typically present the report to the board and then attends a meeting. The process and timing is not set. We'll notify Andrew when it's finished. And then the Board of Trustees decides when and how we move. So that's just an update on McGrath. And that's all I have.
Does the board have a, a preference on how, when we meet, do we want her to meet after any regular meeting and assume?
That's not ready to go, we don't have a date yet. I may actually just wait until it's been delivered to Andrew and then we figure it out.
Okay, but I just thought if it got delivered in the next week or so, those coming months, we got a whole meeting. When would we want an executive session, the next meeting we have?
My first guess would be executive.
Yeah. All right, let everybody know, next meeting, executive session, after, ready?
Okay, let me deal.
Sounds good. Right, um, and they all have the trustees' report.
Actually, Sunday was a good day to take, uh, take a ride in my scooter, so I rode over to Whining Creek. I'd never been there. So I had the whole place to myself, walked around the pond and walked on that.
Did you see anything but the pond? We were, the, the pond was at a problem a while back.
It looked like they redid the walk thing on the, or the bridge, whatever, on the, I think it's the west side.
On the other side of the pier?
Yeah. And then, so then I drove over to Rush Creek and there was probably two, three people fishing and then where somebody had a picnic up on the top.
So you had a little scooter that you ride around?
Oh, yeah. So I, I've been there quite a few times, but I've never been to Whining Creek, so.
Check it out, perfect.
Very good. I mean, it was in good shape though.
I guess, it was fine by me.
All right, good, well, you didn't fall on top of one.
No.
That's good. Anyone else have anything to report? Dave will move on to public board liaison and stop with us.
I did not see him online, they have a meeting tonight as well.
Oh, okay, well, all right, we'll move on. President's report, I don't have any reports, do you have any reports? I don't know, report you just gave.
Uh, no, that's all I got.
All right. All right, word of public comment number one, twice. Is there anybody from, who's been in that, Wendy or Stephanie? Stephanie, Stephanie got any public output that wants to comment?
I do not see anybody, I think you're good.
Okay. President, the board consent agenda, anybody, oh, Wendy, we go. Anybody have anything you want to pull?
Yes. Anything you want to pull?
Do I get to, you read and then we motion to approve or we?
She is the motion.
I am the motion.
She's the motion when she reads it.
It's better if I take this one, yes, and then the line here.
Okay, so I don't see anyone wanting to pull anything, then Wendy's going to read it after. This is the motion.
Okay, so I, I move that we approve the following consent agenda consisting of twelve point one approval of minutes of previous meetings. Twelve point one, A, June eighteen, twenty twenty, committee in the hold. Twelve point one B, June twenty-three, twenty twenty. Twelve point one C, May twenty-one, twenty twenty, executive session. Twelve point two, acceptance of the treasurer's report. Twelve point two, twelve point two A, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Twelve point two B, financial resilience B plan, COVID nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Twelve point three, acceptance of the investment report for first quarter, first fiscal quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-five-six, a resolution designating a depository financial institution for district funds from August first, twenty twenty to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty dash fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing the destruction of listed verbatim recordings of executive session meetings prior to January twenty nineteen in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Twelve point six, resolution number twenty-five-eight, a resolution authorizing the release of listed executive session meetings minutes to the public building in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-five-nine, a resolution affirming the executive director's execution of change order number eight with Schroder Asphalt Service Department, Humbly, Illinois, for the asphalt resurfacing of the Prairie Trail Link in Region One of the Illinois Major Shop Parking Lot. Twelve point eight, authorization to prepare specifications and letting of bids for upgrades to fuel the management program. Twelve point nine, twelve point nine, resolution number twenty dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a one-year auto renewable, auto renewable license agreement with McHenry County Cycling without age. without aid for storage of their equipment at a whole building in Glacial Park at Harth Road at 31 through July 31, 2021. 12.10, second reading ordinance number 20 dash 986, an ordinance authorizing administrative language in the district general use, federal use ordinance in section five, bicycling and electronic personal assisted mobility devices, subsection E, to read, quote, "Use for ride of electric or electric assisted bicycle exceeding a speed of 15 miles per hour," and to authorize the publication of the revised general use ordinance. 12.11, second reading ordinance number 20 dash 987, an ordinance amending personal policy and procedure manual 7.27, emergency code. 12.12, first reading, amending comprehensive administrative policy and procedures manual 2.04, 2.06, and more specifications. 12.13, resolution number 20 dash 61, a resolution authorizing payments in the amount of $1,899, one, $1,899,006, 25, due on August 1st, 2020, to the Bank of New York Mellon, BNY Mountain, Dell Services for the general obligation refunding bond, Series 2014.
A second.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell. Yes. Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty.
Yes.
Okay. Move on to 13 holes. 13-1, approval of bill table for month of June 2020.
Well, first, I would like to add an audit, uh, bill.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Sure.
There's one that I did not see in the detail report, but it was in the first sheet, and it was T-0000861, partners in mission for $77. So I'd like to look at that. Anybody else have another one?
Well, I, I have a question, and it's just to educate myself. Minnows, mealworms, and mice for $552, how, is that something that recurs quarterly, annually, monthly, weekly? So that's just a question, so that I get an idea of how much we spend on wildlife food.
Anybody have an answer to that?
I don't off the top of my head. Can you get an idea on that, Wendy? We'll get back to you, though.
Well, I could, we could look up the total animal supplies very quickly, but as far as specifically to those items, that would take a few minutes to, you know, go back and interpret.
Well, I thought it was a.
We'll include that bill as part of the internal audit, too. So we'll answer the question, but we'll also pull copies of it.
Thank you.
Who was the vendor? Or, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's a question. I thought maybe someone had gone fishing.
Yeah.
Got all his bait.
They provided bait, green, green bait.
So that's where the northern came from.
We pay for that up there.
I do have one more.
Okay, good.
Uh, vendor, uh, 30M, 3566, Menards of Crystal Lake, for $141, 12 times.
Dave, does that meet our fiduciary responsibility?
Sure.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, um, through consideration of approval, payment of concert FS as indicated on position of bill pending report, period ending June 30th, 2020. The motion is.
I'll also move.
Dave, second. Pat.
Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
And Trusty Honey.
I'll just say.
Okay. Most of the answers.
Thank you. 13-1C, consideration to approve the payment of balance of bills as indicated on the position of bill pending report from month ending June 30th, 2020. The motion is, that's, Pat, bill.
Okay.
And I'll roll.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Most of the answers you have.
13-2, execution of final spread, financial strategy to pay off each installment agreement. So I assume we need to vote on each one of these separately, correct?
Correct.
So we've met about these last week, we've discussed them, so we can have a motion a second, and we can discuss them more if we'd like. I'd like a motion on.
Well, let me, I move to approve ordinance 2988, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying off the cost of purchasing real, personal property for both in and for the McHenry County Conservation District, McHenry County, Illinois, and for the issue of a not-to-exceed $2.4 million in debt certificates, Series 2020, of said conservation district evidencing the right to payment under said agreement, and providing for the security and means of payment under said agreement of said certificate. Oh. What did I just say?
Linda, make him a second. Um, is there any discussion, if you want to have any more questions on that? I'll call the roll.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Brand.
Uh, yes.
And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to 13-2B, appointment of the bond council. And also, is there, they want to make that motion bill?
I'll, I'll move, we adopt resolution 20 dash 62, a resolution appointing attorney Kyle W. Harding of Chapman Cutler L.L.P. as a district bond council for issuance of debt certificates, Series 2020 transaction.
Second. And? Uh, any discussion? Call the roll.
Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Thomas, yes. And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Okay, move on to 13-2C, appointment of financial advisor.
Uh-huh. You read that one? Sure. I approve, I move to approve 13.2C, appointment of financial advisor, resolution number 20 dash 63, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with Siree Ratchlin of Maristum Advisors in Chicago, Illinois, to serve as the district's financial advisor for the issuance of debt certificates, Series 2020, at a cost not to exceed $9,500.
Second. Linda? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas, yes. And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Very good. So are there more steps to that, or are we?
You're good to go, so we will be watching and getting prepped and ready to go, and we'll communicate with Kyle and Jamie.
Very good.
We'll keep careful.
Do you think they'll be, how long do you think that'll take, so we get everything issued? I don't know if it's on, is there a time frame?
My understanding, and Andy's been tracking it from our finance meeting, that they were already prepping to get things in motion, waiting for tonight, so. Have you heard anything differently, Andy, about where they're going to move?
Uh, no, the, the big question's going to be, can they do a private placement? Because that could happen very quickly if they can find, you know, a bank at a good rate. If they can't, then they got to go to the public offering, and obviously, the ordinance provides for both, either one of those options. The public offering would take a minimum of 60 days to execute, and probably be closer to 90. But, but Jamie's been kind of exploring things for the last week, and he's got some confidence we'll get a private placement, so that'll be, it'll be great. We could get it done real quick.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 13-3, job classification review.
Well, I would like to move to approve, uh, move, move to approve resolution 2064, a resolution reclassifying the positions of restoration ecologists, plant ecologists, wildlife ecologists from the grade 19 to 20 on the technical slash professional salary schedule, and authorization for corresponding retroactive salary adjustment, effective date of April 1st, 2019.
Linda, second.
Thank you.
Discussion? I'll see.
Well, I think, you know, we, I think we talked about before, I think, as an assistant, great job presenting the numbers and pulling that together as we posted that last year in July, and I would thank them for their efforts of bringing that forward.
That's, very good. As you were able to pull that together, I, I think that's part of having a detective team, a veteran team, that they know where to work, and where to, what to do, what to think, you got it.
Well said. Well said.
So, if I have, got any other discussion, I'll call for a roll.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Thomas, yes. And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Most of the answers you have.
Okay, now they want, want to move the money around, but they actually cover it.
So may I also then, uh, move to approve ordinance 2999, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds between budget line items GL01-08-443, GL01-08-450, GL01-08-601, GL01-0-8-842, GL01-08-845-2, GL01-08-201, GL01-08-280, and GL01-08-284, in the general fund in the amount of $20,248.94 for fiscal '21.
And my point of order, that might be ordinance number 20-989.
98, I remem, uh, was I?
You got it right, but I believe that number should be 989, but, um.
I would approve either one.
Yes.
I would move for either one.
Oh, and I get the, the actual order.
Now, a second, for whichever is the right number.
Thank you, gentlemen.
They have one question. Was the, was the, hold up. Pay increase or retroback, it was $10,000 or something, and that?
$12,000.
$12,000, and the other $8,000 went forward, or was, was $20,000, or, yeah.
Yes, so there was the retroactivity, and then we have the payment that took us to the next table period from afterward this is, and then the adjustments for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, so that's, that kept us all up to last year and next year. And how, and we have no difficulty with entering that into the, the, that's retropay now, or in a different fiscal year, and all issues that?
It'll all hit this year. We're just making it so for the calculation to be effective, to be on par with everybody else, but it's just hit this budget, this for year 2021.
Okay. All right. Call the roll.
Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Brand.
Yes.
Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Most of the answers you have.
See, we have one more here, 15-3C.
So if I may please, move to approve resolution 20 dash 65, a resolution reclassifying position of community relations specialists in the administrative salary schedule for non-exempt to exempt.
One second.
Second. Any discussion? What's that, Amy?
Oh, he didn't hear.
So under the Fair Labor Standards Act, employees, there's specific factors that weigh whether they're eligible for overtime, or whether it's exempt. And so currently, this position, we have, that it be relooked at, we were going very conservatively, positions were sitting on the fence of whether they were hourly or to be exempt. Clearly, it's a creative type position, so we're very comfortable, we would normally err on the side of conservative in the event there was a claim, instead of paying the overtime and not come back with, you know, several years later, that you have to go back in and make up for penalties. So, but in this case, we're very comfortable that it meets the requirement of the position to move it from an exempt. So that way, as an example, they're doing a project, they're on deadline, they can finish the work and do what's necessary versus having to stop because we're fearful that they're going into overtime.
Do we pay any overtime to the position for that year, or?
I couldn't speak off the top of my head. Wendy's online, she knows the deadlines with landscapes and other events and activities. Wendy, up the position has paid out, okay?
Um, more often than not, it's a not, so maybe two or three hours at most. It just becomes a contention of stress trying to get things done under deadline.
Okay, so, so obviously, there's not a lot of overtime, which is a good thing, so to move it to this, which would be something that, um, perhaps.
Correct. Correct.
It's, it's, very good. Well, um, can I have a vote?
Sure. Uh, Trusty Britt.
Yes.
Trusty Campbell, yes. Trusty Thomas, yes. Trusty Cook.
Yes.
Trusty Brand.
Yes.
And Trusty Honey.
Yes.
Yeah, moves them to executive director's report.
Um, well, we had, uh, 13, 13.4, we have a few, I did that 13.
Oh, I jumped ahead. I can't wait, I laugh, I got to get it on.
I was like, whoo.
I don't know, maybe we weren't talking about that.
Are you on that?
I'm going to take a quick break.
You know, if I had to tip 13-4 through 13-8, it would really take a long time.
Yeah, so 13.4, if I can, President Henning, we had discussion at the finance meeting on three scenarios. We were hopeful to give some general direction, if possible, before the end of the month, of kind of where the board was leaning. That way, we know where, what we need to do to come back to you in audit, or whatever conversations that you feel are appropriate with the chairman and county board, or whoever else you feel it would be necessary. And then, of course, our levy, once we get the direction in August, or whatever we're doing, then we'll formulate the necessary ordinance to be presented at the September meeting.
So how would you like to kick this off? You just want, yeah, get here one, two, and then three? Maybe you just wanted to drag each one a little bit, half of the tier, so we could have a short interest on it. Maybe drag each one, but anyway.
Right, so I believe the, and Andy, please jump into me, kind of the three scenarios. The scenario one, which was presented, that was based on capturing, going forward to the 2019 levy and going forward. And so we.
And going for a maximum levy two years in a row.
Elizabeth, do I have?
We reduced it last year, right? Scenario two was to go back and recapture what we had foregone with the 2018, so taking one more look back and picking that up. And then, the scenario three that was presented was just to capture new development. So I get that correct, Andy?
Yes.
And so in the scenarios that were presented, we showed, we discussed what that would mean financially. All scenarios provide a necessary reduction that we would need to go back and make. With those certain percentages, we would have to go in and make adjustments. I believe there was discussion at finance, in general. We had put some assertions out there that capital would come from reserves, and then there was a discussion on the various options with the reflexibility to also take care of some general operating out of front reserves as well, if we were to go forward. And I believe there was a discussion, if we were to move forward, understanding the situation in the counties that we've had and experienced globally with COVID, that then we would hold task to be able to recapture. All scenario shows us taking it full levy in the two preceding years that follow. Right, so 13.4, right. So in 2021 and 2022, capturing those two months. Anything else, Andy, from that scenario?
No, um, we could go over the, you know, the deficits that were projected for each of them, if it would be helpful, but if that's not needed.
Look, the only other note I would add is that scenario number one would be a moderately severe impact on the district. Scenario number two would be a low impact to the district, and scenario number three would be a severe impact to the district, as my notes show.
Did we want Andy to address the sort of per scenario? I know it's definitely helpful from that, or?
If you'd like, any questions you have for Andy, go right ahead.
In, in scenario one, we were showing a, a two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-dollar projected deficit, so that would have to be made up. Scenario two showed a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar deficit, and then scenario three with no levy increase, or we were saying we would just take the new development, which four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar projected deficit. Um, again, the only thing we increased was the personnel, the known personnel cross, cost going up, the wages went up two percent, um, we did include converting to IPBC, the net health insurance cost was going up about ten and a half percent, or ten-point-six, I think it was. Everything else, we left flat, so they're pretty conservative projections.
Andy, I, I really wish I could understand this deficit as a percent of total expenses, excluding capital. So, a, a, a scenario one is one, a minus one-point-seven, scenario two is a minus point-oh-four, and scenario number three is a minus three-point-six. I don't get that stuff. Deficit as a percent, percent of total expenses, like I grabbed my head.
The, the simple answer is the concept was just trying to show approximately what we'd have to reduce the total operating expenses by in order to offset that. The reason it's excluding capital, um, is we're, you know, basically the capital can change from year to year, so we're just saying, you know, that could be zero, that could be a half a million dollars, the capital, so let's, let's not look at it, let's just look at it from an operating, um, perspective. If you take the nine, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it shows nine million, six-hundred-twenty-two thousand as the total operating expense, including capital, so you back out the ninety-three thousand from that, um, and then your deficit will go down, you know, by the same amount, and, and basically it's that ratio then. Total expenses less capital, divide, or the, the deficit less capital divided by the total expenses less capital.
Basically, that's what we would have to cut out of budget if we wanted to balance it.
Right, exclude, not, not considering capital, otherwise we could just say, well, let's, you know, cut three-hundred thousand of capital, and problem solved, so to speak. That, that's, you know, that's a real cost.
Bill had a question.
Go ahead.
It's also possible that you could cover some of these deficits by taking money out of reserves.
Yes, and I think...
You gave us the impact on reserves, um, and obviously, it would bring the reserves down, um, but that is a possibility. And the other thing, at least based on, you know, the experience of, of the last year, sometimes, you know, our budget isn't right, it's not able to predict exactly what the expenditures would be. For example, last year, we wound up not expending all that was budgeted for expenses, so there was some extra at the end of the year, and fortuitously, there was also some extra revenue at the end of the year. So, obviously, no one's crystal ball is perfect. I think your projections are, 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 are very solid, but there still is some gray and some flexibility depending upon how the year, uh, proceeds. And I would say, from a personal point of view, if it weren't for COVID, I would feel very comfortable in going to the county board and asking to take the levy, perhaps from nineteen as opposed to eighteen, just to, um, you know, not look like we were, um, too aggressive. But because of COVID, and, and, I mean, I really think that we should tighten our belts and COVID scenario three, that would be my opinion.
Well, and to your point with COVID, we don't know exactly how everything's going to play out. I see that from your memo today that we got five thousand back from the tax group, that, and we don't know, do we have one more year to pay ten thousand again next year?
No, that would be, and we actually, uh, we had some discussions, we were going to cancel the contract, um, they were working that way, and now...
Oh, we were supposed to next year, one more year, was there?
This was gonna be the second year.
Was it two years, three?
It was two years.
Oh, it was all two years, okay. So, anyway, so we've got five thousand dollars coming back from that, and I just, I just think that there's gonna be several things that we need to cancel along the way that we may not have expenses, but then, I don't know about all the built-in extra stuff that we can, you know, because COVID, but it does change the way things happen.
And we did put for reimbursement whether we'll be successful or not, and we capturing, um, some of our expenses from COVID, we're hopeful, so that will help mitigate that. But yes, you are correct, the adjustment on this budget is comparative not to the, um, forecasting of COVID, it's, it's what we approved.
Right.
I did also, um, I did have an opportunity to speak with Pete Austin at the county, that we do get a, kind of feel for what they were planning, and of course, they will not, they're starting conversations, I know Andy had also had a conversation with the finance director, so they believe, um, they'll be looking at what they will be doing with their levy in September. There was a resolution that was forwarded on through, I believe it was law and government, uh, just some general feeling about, you know, unemployment, COVID, that I believe that didn't move yet.
Listen, I'm sorry, you said they were gonna talk about our levy?
Not our levy, their levy.
Their levy.
Their levy will be September, um, we always go first, um, we did, so they were, they weren't sure exactly where they were going to be, um, and I did ask about the mental health board, um, not that, I mean, we have to do what we knew to do, not what someone else is doing, because we're all in a different place, um, and especially felt that they were going to be looking to capture, that's part of their aggregate, but the mental health board would be looking to capture their funding, and they've got some other grants and things to take care of, you know, what they do. So, so depending on where we go, um, the other thought from a staffing perspective, um, was since we're not sure how everything's gonna play out, um, we did use it once before, and again, it would need to be in the board's consideration, but if we were to take the levy and then have the potential to abate it later, then you wouldn't necessarily put yourself in a position to, should they take it, that we didn't take it and we need it and things change, I mean, I don't know. So, it's where the board feels most comfortable and flexible in what our financials are going for.
What for, you know, and this, I don't think you have to talk, the county, what percent of their revenue comes from real estate tax? What percent comes from, from the tax? Andy, Mike?
Andy, you have that dashboard, I know you did.
I, their general fund, I believe, is fifty percent property tax revenue, but they have so many funds, in fact, you can't even, you know, you, they, you take all your minor funds, and they probably take more than twenty funds, I'll bet it's close to the thirty, and they love them all together for reporting purposes, so you don't, there's no way to even access how that breaks down, but the general fund, I'm pretty sure, is fifty percent property tax revenue.
So, they've got fifty percent of their, their tax revenue that could be hit by COVID to some degree, one way or the other, depending on where that money comes from, versus, and we're, we've complained over the years, we're a hundred percent real estate, we're mostly real estate tax, besides the mansion, I mean, we're all, we, we have, we won't think, you know, we're doing a six, I think, percent tax, you know, we'll be, we'll be, better shape than most.
More stable, right.
You don't wanna say better shape, you just wanna say more stable? That's a better word. Okay, I want to agree with you there.
Well, from property taxes, but they have the other things that they can rely on.
Right, but those aren't still reliable right now.
Right, right. Um, so, we did do that, was that in, um, were we, was that in twenty-seventeen, or where we, and we took the levy and then it was the idea that we were gonna abate it? And part of the reason for doing that was the ability to go back two years, and that becomes your level, your base, so by not taking, um, we don't take it this year, as we move forward, we're starting with the lower level from twenty-nineteen. I don't know if that's a consideration as well?
I think the abatement would, could be swallowed by the county a lot better than taking the levy and not abating it.
Well, no, I'm just saying that because we've got two things, I think Andy was gonna jump in, so I wanna hear what you have to say, but we, we've got a couple things we've talked about, that we are, we go first, so before everybody else, um, and, uh, and the idea that if you can go back two years, or, you know, by, by taking the levy and then abating it, you at least by next year, when you go to twenty, you take the next levy, it's at a slightly higher level, maybe gives you some, a little bit more of a cushion. So, Andy, I think you were gonna say something.
Um, yeah, so we talked a couple years ago, we were under the understanding that you could recapture an abatement in the following year, but that's not true, but what PTEL does allow is that in any year, filing a, a reduced levy, so in the next year, so we reduced our levy in nineteen, so in twenty, you can go back three years, we could go back to the nineteen, eighteen, or seventeen levy to start. So, that just keeps rolling forward, but, but the key to that is if, if you took a neutral levy this year in twenty, or even if it went up five dollars, then in twenty-one, you couldn't go back because your twenty levy was actually an increase. So, if you wanted the ability to go back three years in twenty-one, you'd have to have at least a small decrease this year. I think Andrew's on the line too, right, so he could chime in if there's any clarification there.
Yeah, I would agree that Andy's, Andy summarized it well.
And, and does that exclude the new construction increase?
Yeah, it's your, it's your net levy, so if that net levy goes up, then looking back isn't an option in the next year, if it goes down, then looking back in the, in the filing year is possible, looking back three years. So, so if we really wanted to be able to go back to eighteen, you, you know, you could do that with a twenty-one levy, twenty-nineteen, eighteen, but the key would be, you'd have to reduce your levy a hundred bucks this year. But I, but if we don't feel good about going back this year, would we feel better next year? I don't know. Since we're on the topic, I will throw one more out there, not to complicate it, but if we're looking, if we, if we start looking at scenario three, that right now includes the new development money of twenty-two thousand dollars, I'm not sure that's worth the benefit to the district of what it might cost you in PR. You know, what, if, if that's the will of the board, it, it might be better, you just go with a neutral levy, you don't even take the new development, because then you can say we didn't increase our levy at all, you know, versus taking the new development. But...
Okay, go ahead.
It's not to, you know, the idea of, of an abatement, you know, using scenario one, what the county does, and then potentially abating that if they ultimately decide not to take an increase.
Andy, could you repeat what you said, because you got cut off in the middle?
Um, on which...
The last sentence, just the last sentence after option three.
Yeah, I think if, if anybody's, if any trustee's decision right now would be partially swayed by understanding what the county does with their levy, if that would make a difference, then I would suggest the abatement would be the way to go, that you would take, you'd go with option one, which would just go back to the, and start with a nineteen levy, um, and, and then you'd wait, see what the county did, and if they don't take an increase, you abate it. I think we would build our budget as if we're not gonna get it, so that we're not in some kind of scramble in October, you know? And that, and, and going back to what Bill said, and what Elizabeth said, a lot of building that twenty-two budget would be relying on reserves, and Bill, you're absolutely right, we've had a surplus every year, going all the way back to, I think, two thousand and twelve or thirteen, and we've never projected, we've never budgeted a surplus, um, and most of that's because you have vacancies that happen during the year, and you just have things that don't get done. Last year, we also had a, a revenue windfall, too, of two-hundred thousand dollars. So, on paper, you know, the budget may show the deficit, but the reality is, it's not gonna go that far in. I'll remind you one more thing, too, the twenty-one budget we're in today, the budget calls for a spend-down of reserves of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. We're not gonna hit it, but we might hit two-hundred thousand of it, we might go into reserves of two-hundred grand, but we're only three months into the year, so it's, it's hard to know that for sure. But, but if we looked, if we looked reserves, I would advocate then to go beyond what we did for twenty-one, because this is a much more dire situation with any of these three scenarios.
I'm sorry, much more dire situation, what? You cut off, Andy?
It's gonna be a much more, dire's the wrong word, it's, well, the scenario three, well, it's gonna be very financially challenging with any one of these scenarios, so I, I would suggest that if the twenty-one budget, the board allowed us to go into reserves, three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, which we did, and that's very similar to all the preceding years, that for the twenty-two budget, there'd be consideration to show a bigger number than that coming out of reserves, at least allow it to go up a hundred thousand, maybe to four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, again, knowing we're not, very likely not gonna spend all that.
All right. When do you have to declare that you're gonna abate it?
Uh, sometime in March, it's, it's a, there's no, I think March thirty-first is like the hot date deadline, yeah, that's the abatement deadline.
Yeah, you can't wait until they make their decision, and later in the year, we have to make the decision now whether we're gonna abate it.
No, no.
So, we can wait on the abatement, so we have to take our levy, we have to pass it through.
Oh, yeah, well, I'd say, how long do you have to, when do you have to say you're gonna abate it?
So, we have by March.
March of twenty-one.
And then...
March of twenty-one.
Oh.
Right, and they will do their budget and levy in November, so we have time, so we have time, it just gives us time.
That's, Tom, that's all, why, Andy, when you said, do you abate, uh, take the levy increase with scenario number one, why wouldn't we wanna take the levy increase with scenario number two? I mean, why would we not, and then abate it with what's in number two?
The only, the only real reason is the, the district made a commitment to reduce the nineteen levy, and if you go back from scenario two and capture from eighteen, then you've kind of eliminated, at least in part, that reduction.
Okay, I said, I, I like that idea, let's talk on number one.
Harder, it'd be harder to get number two through the county than number one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, we kind of made that commitment, so...
So, yeah, this is, uh, option number one, and we make the decision, debate, uh, debate, uh, debate, um, later on.
Well, debate would be a...
It would be a debate.
You're right. I don't know what kind of hassle that would be.
Well, we don't know.
But Andy's right, I mean, we would still continue to budget as if we weren't, right? And then we have some other options that he was talking about in terms of drawdown of reserves.
So, we have to vote on the levy in August?
In September. So, we need to craft the ordinance in August, so you'll leave a decision by August, it's just, if you, with these scenarios, if we need to go back in and sharpen a little bit more of what this would mean, um, to you, I mean, we gave some general high-level impact, you know, but again, a lot of that can be mitigated if we're willing to move to reserve.
Yeah, but we still, the, the, the deficit as a percent of total expenses is half of scenario number three, and I'm beginning to like that.
So, we could actually, though, start the budget process as scenario number three, because we have, we have abatement taxes, that, the levy, that's what we would end up with, scenario number three, either way, for the left, so the budgeting process would be the same either way.
Okay, can they get that?
So, if you're, if you do scenario one, but you abate the, the increase, that really is, is really number three, so the budgeting process would go forward the same either way, and in the meantime, we could maybe try to take the temperature of the county and see what we can do.
That would be a nice thing with, with, with you.
But either way, that's, the budget process really goes forward the same, not like anything would change, if at some point, I mean, we had scenario number one going forward, and we felt confident in not having some abatement taxes for the levy, so we, we did, we performed that, if we felt, if we had built enough support, we're willing to get that. So, either way, the last, we, we, the staff have, um, way forward.
Correct.
With that.
The only...
Go ahead, Andy.
The only clarification that, that I would look for is a, is the board's willingness to allow that budget to develop with a, at least a four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar on-paper reserve spend-down. Again, that's only a hundred thousand more than we're showing right now. Again, that's only 100,000 more than we're showing right now in this 21 year, um, and it's, so that would let us, we build it, and then if the revenue comes in, you just flip it from, you know, coming out of reserves to revenue.
Sure.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, yeah, I am too. Yeah.
I think, I'm seeing them reading out their heads or say, yeah, so I think you got something.
That's great, that gives us some really good solid direction, and then we can continue to work to that and then figure out what strategy we'll be with communications, you know, and all those relationships, and, and understanding of why, because I think definitely, like we've talked about, we've got our, we've talked about what we've done, we're being responsive to the needs of the community now, and that our services are, are very dependable, and residents are using us, whether they're there or not, or, you know, we, we've built a very strong support, so I think it's a good conversation, it's the vision as well.
Good.
Great.
I would say, oh, cool.
The next thing I have is the tactics, and we talked about that last Thursday. Um, was there anything else based on, um, if you're good, we'll bring that back forward in August for, uh, second reading and, and then forward on those items.
Okay.
Great, good on that, and we'll move on to 13, six, the settlement lease with Bella of Boulder Ridge Property Owners' location.
Okay, we need to have Val come into the presentation stuff, can you make Val a co-host, please?
I cannot make him a co-host, it won't let me.
All right, I'm looking for you, Val, to see if I can help out here.
I see him, hey, Val.
You can take me off as co-host, if Val...
He, he should be able to share now, though.
Well, I can, I can talk about it, if you just want me to talk about it.
You, you should be able to share your screen now, though.
Great, that's all I need to do.
You're co-host, you should be able to share. Are you trying to share, Val?
Hang on, sorry.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, are you there? Everybody see that? Okay, sorry, uh, for the delay there. Um, so what we're talking about today is this property that's outlined in the dotted line, that's called Lot 26 at Boulder Ridge Country Club West, Phase One, and it was an addition to Exner Marsh, uh, received by the district in 1999. It's 12 acres, and it was part of a, um, a mitigation in the Army Corps of Engineers Agreement with Par Development. We received that along with about 45 acres, uh, adding to Exner Marsh. Here's a little closer view of it. In 2008, a lease agreement was entered into with the Properties Owners Association of the Villas of Boulder Ridge, and that are these, how, these condominiums or townhouses here. Um, that agreement expired according to its own terms in the summer of 2018, and as you know...
I don't understand, what, what, what use did they want of it?
Pardon me?
It looks like a full wetland.
Right, it's, it's almost entirely open water and wetlands.
So what did they want it for?
Well, they, the, the, they use it for recreation, they have, um, they like fishing in those ponds, even though they're shallow ponds, they, they do stock them, there's some aeration going on there, they have worked with us and, and, um, and implemented a management plan that we approved, uh, that was developed by Applied Ecological Services, uh, to restore, you know, much of the area there. There's a trail network that they've mowed around these ponds, so it's right out their back door, and, um, they've seemed to enjoy it.
And so basically, did they have exclusive use of that property? By that, I mean, could the public go on those trails and fish there, et cetera?
No, um, this lease was, gave them the exclusive use of that property, uh, there was no fee involved, but, um, there was benefit to the district by the management plan, or, you know, and restoration activities that they did implement, uh, but no, it was not open to the public, and is still not open to the public, it's never been open to the public in general.
It's, it's a little hard anyway, because it's a gated community.
Well, this is a gated community?
Yeah, there's the gate getting in there, I mean, I don't know...
There is a gate that you get in off of Frank's Road here on Willow Drive.
Yeah.
Um, but in any event...
Is there a fence, there a fence behind it?
No, no, there's no fence between the property owners and the district property.
So what have they done, what, what's been happening since the lease expires? They still run, they still doing everything they wanna do, and, and everything's been run, and if the lease was still in place?
I would imagine, um, you know, it's, it's the type of thing where it's not posted, like our normal, uh, properties have, you know, are posted with boundaries that indicate that access is only through designated access points and things like that, and, you know, it was a, is a transaction on paper, and unless the, oh, oh, you know, Properties Owner Association gave notice to its individual members, they would have had no, you know, knowledge of whether their rights had expired or not. So I'm sure it's been used, uh, recreationally as if nothing had changed.
So if the lease was still in place, who would, who would have cleaned up that tree? Would we still have cleaned it up, or would that have been their responsibility?
Um, well, my interpretation, you know, something like that was not at all addressed in the lease, I did review that from that perspective, just to see, it's the type of thing where I, I'm sure it's, you know, it's a lease where either party had the right to terminate, so it would be something that would have been negotiated, and my guess is nothing would have changed about who cleaned, ended up cleaning it up. You know, it's just like, uh, if you're renting a house to someone, uh, you know, you, the, the landlord is, is maybe responsible for certain infrastructure or major things, and you're responsible for maybe minor repairs, I, that, that's kind of, that big tree was, I think, a substantial, uh, expense that they would not have contemplated and would have sought our participation on, um, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't specifically, you know, that type of thing is, wasn't, uh, referenced in the lease.
Okay.
So anyway, um, that was the tree that was, that came up, um, that's what it looked like, you know, near the end of last month. There's another view of it from across the pond, and then, um, some quick work by our sites and fleets, did some magic, Perry and manager Weeborg did some amazing job getting a contractor out there, so there's where the tree was, it's, it's disappeared, so, totally gone, so that's where it was.
We're a little bit delayed, Val.
I'm sorry, what?
We're delayed, you're, you're a couple flights ahead of us.
Yeah, we're on that one, we're caught up now.
We can't see where you, what you're showing.
Now you're on with the, with the sign that's laying down.
Okay.
Willow Tree Cross, you're down to...
Now, now we're the same, uh, we're all together now. Yeah.
Well, okay, so, in, in any event, um, the tree has been removed, so, so the issue now is, um, you know, we did get some, some communication from their attorney about this tree that was, I, you know, I think we kind of were a little taken aback at the adversarial nature of that, um, but in any event, uh, we, staff was prepared to proceed with the idea of getting a new lease in place, but we just want to get some direction and input from the board to confirm that's what you desire.
I, I took a little trip, but never left far, what are we, what's, we're trying to decide now, so give them a lease or not?
Yeah, well, so, yeah, we've got this property, they have not, they have not, uh, given us any formal notice that they want to lease, but we've gotten some informal, uh, indications that's what they desire. So the crux of, of any lease will be an agreement to the management plan, you know, it's not just as simple as renewing what was there, because that, that was 10 years old, uh, it, it's, it needs updating, not only in terms of some of its, you know, basic terms and responsibilities, I think, but also just the management and restoration plan. We had asked them before their attorney got involved that, you know, have you had a restoration plan prepared, you know, that, that could be added to a future lease? Uh, I didn't, we didn't get back, they didn't get back to us on that, but that, that, you know, that would be the next question that we would say, well, if you want to lease it, uh, let's see your proposal for how you would manage it, and then we would probably, in light of some of the activities, you know, want to, to prepare a lease that maybe address some of these things that have recently occurred that were not addressed before, so that there's not, um, you know, there's not the ambiguity about how things should be handled or whose responsibility such things are.
So my first thought, though, if they're gonna try to do some restoration or help clean it up and maintain it, uh, we might get something out of that for, for nothing, so, uh, my first thought was just not to lease it, but if they're gonna do some work things or something like that, um...
Well, well, we don't wanna, you know, so it's not open to the public, we, we don't wanna give a, access without rights, you know, without any, our, our sites are not open unless they're open, and this is, this site is not open, and so it's either gonna be open to the public, or it's gonna be theirs exclusively, so, so we don't really wanna continue in a gray area, I don't think, uh, and I think it's better to have an agreement than not an agreement, so that we can, uh, have a clear understanding of what the roles and responsibilities of each party are, so, that, my recommendation is to get a lease, but, uh, you know, plan accordingly based on recent, you know, occurrences.
Val, can I bring up one other point?
I'm gonna stop this share screen here. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, um, three of those ponds are under the jurisdiction of the Lake and the Hills Sanitary District. Those three ponds where the trail goes around them, where the fish were planted are not, are under, would not be our management, correct?
Who, who's speaking?
It's Andy.
And, and your point is what?
That those three, three of those ponds on the edge closest to the residences are under the jurisdiction of the Lake and the Hills Sanitary District.
Right, I agree.
Okay, I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Yeah, the, well, the whole, the, the whole property, yeah, the, the whole property is within the Village of Lake and the Hills, and there is an easement on the property to the Lake and the Hills Sanitary District, um, for access and maintenance of those ponds as they see fit. Uh, I've reviewed those, the district is not required to do any particular maintenance relative to the stormwater there, so it's all on the village, but that's a good point, and thanks for, for bringing that up. It's, it's relevant, there is an easement on the property to the Village of Lake and the Hills, uh, for those stormwater facilities.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, I, I think you should go forward and let us see what we can work out with that, like, because we have really access to, or we don't have any other plans for that property, do we?
No, we don't, and, and we've, you know, it's gone through natural resource, uh, management meetings, just to double check with our, our experts in the field, and we, we feel it would be better to, uh, allow their management of it than us to try to be their, you know, gardeners, so to speak, so...
Yes, still has a question.
Well, um, I have a question for you, Val, and, and that is, do we have other arrangements with private homeowner associations with, um, unique leases on lands that are owned by the district but wind up being, you know, basically assets to the homeowners? That's my question, and, and then...
I sure hope not.
As long as I'm talking, I wanna thank Andrew, uh, for his letter that seemed to explain, uh, you know, our liability situation...
Yeah, that was good.
Which I found, um, reassuring, um, and I would hope that whatever lease agreement, you know, we reach with them, looking at the pros and cons of, uh, you know, the land management, that we get Andrew's input as to, uh, legal protections and liability issues and, and things like that. And, and I don't understand why, when the lease expires in, in 18, some mechanism wasn't triggered to sort of bring this to the attention of, of the board, uh, you know, it would seem to me that that was a sort of a fork in the road, and you either do something to renew the lease, or you, or you shut it down, so I, I think, um...
Well, well, we're, we're a little slow, yeah, but this is that mechanism now, we're at that fork, uh, we try to keep a lot of balls in the air, and usually ones that are, you know, revenue-dependent have a higher priority, uh, this was not a, a revenue source for us, uh, it was an accommodation that was done 10 years ago by a previous board, so, uh, it's right that we revisit it with this board to make sure that you want to do the same thing, um, that, it just wasn't a sense of urgency, and, and I think, you know, we have, uh...
Well, there's the tree, uh, falling down, it's probably, it may not have been addressed.
Um, it, it was, it was on our radar to address, but it, but this did kind of force the issue, so...
Perfect, thank you.
I mean, we have, we just, we have, if I can, there are, I mean, we have licenses, leases, all sorts of things that we manage, and different, uh, branches, divisions of the district have responsibilities to that, so I think on some of that, it's just a matter of, we stay on top too, as, as Val said, there's a lot that's going on, there's a responsibility in both parts, um, and of course, when we're tasked with staff with limited capacity of what we're trying to manage, it is, it is a challenge, so I appreciate that, and, and we've had some good discussion of how we best look towards those database, um, you know, um, priorities of, of what's up and coming and, uh, and to bring them forward.
Can there be something put together that, every expiration date is listed, every time we enter into an agreement, like if this one, we get a five-year agreement, and it'd be 2025, that it can just put on there, so it's 2025, and it, it comes up somehow, it seems like with a computer, we should be able to enter it in as we enter into that?
Well, there is, and they do get entered into a database, and then, again, it's the management of that, um, and then when it's in a variety of different departments, so if it comes through a formalization, Anne has been the one who's been the master of those databases, um...
Well, that's not comforting, she's not gonna be here then.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It doesn't make you feel any better.
It doesn't, and I, and I think, but in, in ownership of that, we've had some discussions, it is, it is with all the entries, it's, some of them are, you know, you get the ones that do, like we set up now, an arrangement with, um, the bicycles, if it's automatically gonna do an annual just renewal unless, you know, um, we decide to pull that, but on the ones that are shorter term, 10-year, 5-year, 7-year, yeah, we can pull a, a query up on which ones are out there, and, uh...
Well, lots of these working out, and I, I assume with your program, something, we, it's not a rent that, it's...
We do have over 260, I think.
Right, here there was, but people...
John, Ed tied up, thank you, so, Ed, you've been trying to get in?
Can you hear me?
Now, I can hear.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would just add a couple of things, um, the first is that the homeowners' association asked the district to do a considerable amount of management on that site prior to the arrangement that Val is talking about, um, we had neither staff capacity nor did the site have the quality that would warrant the type of input that they wanted the district to provide. that would warrant the type of input that they wanted the district to provide. So, the agreement allowed them to pay for the management that they wanted done. The management plan that came from Applied Ecological Services, which they paid to develop, was approved by the district and was very much in keeping with the types of management plans that we have on our own sites. So, for the period of time that this was active, the homeowners association made considerable investments of time and, more importantly, of, of financial resources to do management there. So, I believe it worked out well in the district's favor. The other thing is, and that's why I believe we should at, at least explore whether we, whether we can get it renewed or not on the terms that Val has talked about. The other thing that I would note is that the, the agreement as it stands has a shared responsibility for renewal. So, the homeowners association needed to notify the district in writing that they wanted to renew. So, it was a, a mutual situation. But I, I do think if we don't renew it, we will, we will certainly have to put some inputs in in terms of securing it, because it is unfenced. And that's about a half a mile of fencing through some pretty rough terrain if we were going to fence off that boundary.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, thank you, Ed. Good information. So, our, I guess our direction to Val is to try to continue to work, work on this and, and see if it can bring that back in order.
Got it.
Get the coordination agreement.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Thanks, Val.
13-7, discussion of intergovernmental agreement, grant license, facility use with the Illinois Nature Reserve Mission, the Office of State of Law, clearly, the original. Yeah, for quite a while. Anything new in that regard?
Well, can, can you see the screen I'm, that's up now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this is the second floor plan that Amy Peters sent to me that shows all the furnishings up there on the second floor. And I put some red boxes, if you can see that. These areas that we are proposing be more or less a continuation of the arrangement with INPC to have staff at LBBC. So, since 2013, we had, we've had a formal arrangement for INPC to have offices. Steve Byers has, was officed in this corner office. And that agreement expired last year, and it kind of coincided with his retirement. And his retirement was kind of a prolonged, almost day-to-day, week-to-week situation. And I think it's, he's totally retired now, although some things of his still remain in that office. But they have announced, INPC have announced his predecessor, Mr. John Nelson, and they are very much interested in having office space at LBBC. And we would be very much interested in, in accommodating that because of just the collegial relationship that we have with INPC. They keep us abreast of grant opportunities. They've been a source for grant funds for restoration activities of the district. And it's just a very good, positive relationship. And we've worked obviously on nature preserve dedications, you know, with them. So, it's, it's nice to have that relationship. So, what we're proposing is that Steve take this office here, and, and now, this time, one in addition, they would like an intern to join them. So, we have looked at, you know, Tom Simpson has, has the, the research field station. He's, he's office over here, and he's coordinates most of this half of the, the building. And he's, he's indicated that this smaller box here in, in red would accommodate an intern. And so, we would like to move forward with, with a new agreement with INPC. We would probably make it similar to before, a three-year renewable agreement for these spaces at LBBC. But it's just, not to assume anything, we just wanted to make you aware that was, that's up for renewal. The request has been formally made by IDNR and INPC to, you know, for this space, and staff would, with your permission, move ahead with that, with that transaction.
Any questions for anyone on that? No, just a little side note, John's a friend, so I think give the smallest space possible. The class would be good enough. No, I, I agree with that. I'm fine with that. Okay.
All right.
I think they all, looks like they're on board for you to move ahead on that.
Yeah, so hopefully, that, next month, something will be ready for you. You know, depending on getting, some things have to be moved around and sanitized and prepared, but that will be the goal. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Val.
Thank you.
13-8, amending board trustees established, meeting dates for remainder of 2020.
So, are there any changes that you want to make? You discussed taking everybody part of the finance and committee and incorporating those into the COW. So, if you're good with our meetings being the COW on the Thursday, follows the regular meeting on the Tuesday, and then we can go ahead and just cancel the president, if you wish to, on the other finance meetings. However, we set that, then we don't have to make any changes.
It works for everybody.
That works for me.
So, we're eliminating those, that Tuesday meeting that would be associated with the.
The old finance special.
August 18th and September 15th. Okay, the meeting would be canceled.
Would we get rid of?
That, that there is no committee of the poll in November or December because of the holidays, the way the holidays fall.
Right.
Just so you know.
So, we, we may add any, there could be special calls or more than one.
We can call a finance meeting if we get ready to adjust with the budget and we want, and we think we can get all done tonight, so it's a call meeting.
So, Pat wasn't here, so I was just gonna say that we're trying to move the finance committee over to the COWs, because we're all meeting here anyway, and we're taking it to a full board instead of a three-member committee. So, that eliminates the two meetings, one in August and one in September. I don't think we had it scheduled. It weren't scheduled every month.
Yeah, this year we did schedule a finance every month.
Yeah, I already have a call by my home. So, so, so in August, what's it, 18th or the 20th?
The 18th.
It's canceled.
Canceled.
It'll be the 20th and then.
And then 20th and 21st.
So, you're saying it's now on, it's the Thursday and then the fourth Tuesday?
Except for in October.
September, the 13th and the 14th. November, the 15th. I'm fine with that, John. So, it shows two.
So, it's the only two that I know that we're canceling, right?
Thursday and the fourth Tuesday.
Could someone, could staff send an email with the date, you know?
Yeah, I always have.
I'm happy to do that. It was an updated list. And so, with that, if that's the change, the resolution to us to have to repost and do all of that, we don't need to do that. We don't need to pass this resolution this evening. We'll go ahead and we'll maintain what we have, go ahead and cancel those finance meetings. That doesn't require change, and then we're golden. And then, should you want a special call meeting and such, you can always add that. So, we don't publish anything different to the annual schedule.
Oh, I agree. All right, I'm good with me. All right, I just, that freed up two more nights' long.
And a lot of time for staff too.
Oh, yeah, I, I fear you're just happier, probably happier. I, I just think it was just one way.
We're mutually, we're mutually appreciative, so.
Okay, definitely, now, I find it 14,000, that, that was a lot of time, I can say. 14,000, well, all yours.
So, yeah, most of these things, I think, are all in your package. We do our quarterly update four times a year, that's how we're tracking. So, a lot of material to take a look at, but it's there. We've been updating legislatively in the federal level, specifically with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, making sure funds are coming to special districts that we could actually apply. For, for example, with the COVID reimbursement. Our projects are tracking. So, again, if you have any specific questions and you review that, don't hesitate to give me a call, and, and, but we're working through that. We shared how we were doing on the pandemic. And in most cases, we're either tracking as expected or doing better than. And then there are other areas that were off the trail and, you know, to be expected. And, but we're adjusting accordingly. I did share with you in a memo, we did have another team member that did not confirm yet, but in essence, we're waiting for testing. So, we've been working through that. That would be, if this confirms, that would be our second case, but we don't know that yet. But, again, staff is doing an amazing job of, of working and, and adjusting with all the public that is out on our site. And then I did have, as far as two additional items, I did need your feedback on. So, the first one was with the Arnold 300 West. Council had shared, and I have forwarded that on to you, correspondence on the county health department and their request for a groundwater ordinance. And basically, we need to determine if the board is agreeable for us to attend a special meeting, because they're gonna hold with the neighbors, and for us to provide a written response on that the district is opposed to them amending the groundwater ordinance. And that is what we've shared in the past with the state attorney.
The reduced restriction of the groundwater.
The reduced restriction, right. We, we, we are opposed to that. And so, I just wanna make sure the board is on board with a consensus that that is the direction we should be.
I can't believe they're still pushing that ordinance, so I hate it. So, I'm, I'm in a, that's written response and attending. Nobody, nobody's explaining a reason for us to change our stance on that. Nope.
So, and transfer a special counsel for that to D. Grossmark. And so, if you're good with that, we will prepare. A date has not been set yet for this meeting, but that will be forthcoming, and that will be.
And they wanted it, it, they wanted, after COVID or something, they wanted everyone there in person, if I read you right.
Correct, the neighbors, the neighbors have been focusing on this, on their area. Obviously, the district, we're part of that, and they wanna hear what we have to say. And, and, you know, again, they're going through the formal process because they are pushing to have this modified, and.
How many neighbors are there involved in this?
Oh, gosh, half a dozen.
I feel like we've talked about this for a long time, but is everyone still comfortable with it? I don't remember since this whole thing started.
Oh, my God, when did it start?
So, 17, 2015, 2015.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sure it's, okay, so whoever's probably heard it, sorry.
And just, just so you know, our council through, and this is a part of it, we would go back, the Dharma has been managing there under the pollution liability to make sure that our property is, is able to be returned to, you know, and it's, we're not part of the lawsuit. It's the state of Illinois, again. And so, with that, we've stated to allow the state and EPA to do what they need to do, and, you know, obviously, clean up the courts. So, if everybody's agreeable on that, then I will keep you apprised that that corresponds and, and everything moves forward with that. The other one, generally, I do handle these things, but I just sent it out. I thank you for those that responded back to me. You know, so often, there's a lot of, sometimes everybody wants another unit of government to jump in on a, a neighborhood issue. And this is related to one of the school districts, and it's a focus space and neighbors. And so, if the board, generally, I would, I would go ahead and respond directly, but this did come to the attention of the board, and I was happy on that. So, if you're all in concurrence, I will send correspondence in a nice way.
Not our issue.
It's not our issue, we're not contingent to that, and, and just to provide that communication back. All right, and we'd all thank you for that. And that is all I have.
Great, thank you. Any adjustments and reports? So, we've, everyone's had them in the past. We haven't changed the board number 6.5. We want to sign them as they were, or do we wanna wait, or do we wanna change? Or do we wanna wait till we get our act trustee? Who will be a day, who will be in our line here? I mean, are, are there meetings going on that's like, when did you think, their factory was, was 24, right?
Yeah, I did, and right now, I'm currently secretary for that. And if any, I mean, so, I probably would fulfill my commitment, at least by the end of the calendar year with them.
Oh, well, yeah, so.
And that is one of the things, in me being farther to the south than any of you, most of the meetings are south. So, if anyone is close, I mean, not that I'm way that much closer, but I'm certainly closer than anybody else. And it does take a little bit of time to get a speed, so nobody else is really jumping at it. I can go ahead and continue with that. I think the only other thing that I would, I would say is that I wouldn't, and I'll, I would try to go anyway, depending, but I wouldn't mind representing our special powers.
Oh, you would, that would be great. I don't wanna do that. Okay.
But that's, you know, I'm just putting it out there, if somebody else would like an opportunity to, to, you know, in fact, it's, in, in other words, if somebody wants to come to any of the front meetings, like I said, I'll fulfill my obligations throughout this year. If anybody else would like to join in, that's, I'm, I'm more than.
Not jumping at it. I'm not sure.
Um, we'll move on to, we'll, Ed, continue on it with the rap?
Um, yeah, rap should be winding down this year. I just finished submitting commentary on the open space section, the green infrastructure section, and the agriculture section, and probably we'll do one more on climate. But it's heading towards the finish line, but it probably will be active for most of the next year.
Do they meet, I mean, now that the plan, once that's finalized, will they be meeting, like, to review throughout, at all next year? Or is it just, it's just like, it's just a every-so-of-often process?
That's a really good question. I don't think that's been completely determined. I think it still has quite a few months before it's gonna be approved. Scott, I talked with Scott today, and he's still in the editing process.
Yeah, it's a big document. All right.
Okay, Val will continue as is. Charles Wilderness, I assume, will, will, will continue there?
Yeah, as chair of the alliance, so, yes, I'm, I'm there in facilitating that. And a lot of great things are happening, and we look forward to getting everybody more involved with some of the initiatives that are happening that I think will be very helpful. We just passed the green vision and got support. So, we're now beginning to put the metrics on some really aspirational goals for the region, the four-state region. And then, as well as working on some JDI initiatives, which stands for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So, I think there's some really good stuff that's coming out to protect and care for our open spaces in, in all areas of the green economy. So, yeah, I will continue, and we'd welcome anyone that wants to jump on any of the Zoom calls, the things that we've got. I'll send information out, and we're more than welcoming involvement.
You had a, you're a strong partner award, I know.
Yeah, I got like one more year.
Just one more?
Yeah.
You've been on a second round for 10 years again, right? You're on.
You've been, you've been 12 years.
Wait, wait, how long?
You, you get, no, you, like, five years, and then you, five years, and you've gotta take like a.
Ten years, no, you get five two-year terms, but 10 years.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, five two-years term, okay.
And it's the most you can be, and then you have to go off for a year.
Okay.
So, Pat and I served together one other time.
Years ago.
And then he, when we were young.
So, when I'm, I think I got one more, or, yeah, one more year, and then I'm done.
Then Pat went back on, so he's got, I didn't really get almost another 10 years in again.
Wow.
Yeah, so I thought, I thought.
Wow. That's public truth.
Oh, yeah, you do, 12 years. Very good. All right, um, yeah, the next one, I'm not gonna say all the words there. Are you, um, have, if you're, go on board with that?
Yes, and again, there is, in August, the Illinois Association Conservation Forces District will be meeting via Zoom, so that will be happening. Also, under the Illinois Park and Recreation Association, I am cheering, I was asked to head up a task force for Forests of their District and Conservation District to better expand professionals. So, we've got a task force that's a short-term group, and it'll be wrapped up by the end of December with some recommendations from state association. And then IEP, of course, offers a lot in the educational programs. And so, again, I will continue to push those out to the board and associate. So, if there's opportunities that you're interested in, that is part of the membership, and we'd appreciate that.
And whether you continue on with the Conservation Foundation?
Sure, Pat.
When will it take, like, you do?
Yeah, if there's somebody else who wants to.
I may try to go with you.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
Obviously, the frame of fall, I'm sure it doesn't go, that'd be great. I'll definitely, maybe I'll move my life to that.
And if, you know, if I need to back off, if somebody else can go, that's more than, I'm signed with them.
Why do they ever...
Yeah, no, they do, they have, it's room for as many as they want, so, okay.
Try to keep me up, speed on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and the COT, share disaster study, where are we at on that?
They should be wrapping up. There was a meeting, and this was with the county and the COT, and we looked at a draft report with CNAP, so that'll be timed soon, I think, with COVID has slowed it down a little bit, but that should be coming out, and then Algonquin and Cherry, Bavaria Land, they were ready with their final draft and had some public meetings, so that too, and then those will be suspended, will be done, and will be on to new communities looking for new projects, so, short-term.
And NAP is that continuing, John?
And NAP is to be, yeah, John, is taking the, the care on the, with the county and the transportation group.
Can I bring this other outreach contact? Do you have anything else in mind at this point in time?
I do not, and I said this every annually, if other trustees, the other things in the new things that are emerging, that we should maybe be at the table with, then those should be brought forward, you know, for the, if the board is interested in the vacant area in there, that we're not serving, and how does the line section keep the plan?
Same. If anybody else finds anything along the way that they're interested in or would like us to be involved in, bring it forward, and we can do what we can. And we'll move on to public comments, too. Stephanie, do we have anybody sitting out there wanting to talk to us?
No, there are not.
All right, thank you.
Then I move to go into executive session pursuant to two C eleven pending litigation of the Open Meeting Act.
You have a second?
Yeah.
You have a second? I assume you have a roll, all hold on that?
Yeah. Tucky Brant?
Yes.
Tucky Britt?
Yes.
Tucky Cook, yeah, Tucky Campbell, yes, Tucky Thomas, yes, and Tucky Hennig.
Yes.
Ocean Castle, Indiana, Indiana, Mersley at Southern nineteen, yeah.
Okay, so we're signing out of this, and I guess to let everybody know, we will reconvene after the day.
All right, you're in, everybody's in.
Everybody's in?
We're back.
All are in.
I'd say you're most in turn.
I'm making motions.
Linda and Bill have a second. They're all, all aboard.
Tucky Thomas, yes, Tucky Brant?
Yes.
Tucky Cook, yes. Tucky Britt?
Yes.
Tucky Campbell, yes, and Tucky Hennig.
Yes. Perfect, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.